Thank you.
So I'm sure that my colleagues recognize these three individuals who have contributed many years to the Indian Orchard community and to the Indian Orchard Council. Recently, Pat and Linda retired from their service on the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, and Jonathan Bosbeckian just announced his retirement after 26 years. And so I thought that it would be appropriate for us to make this an Indian Orchard night at City Hall and recognize those who have contributed to the Indian Orchard community. And so I have some proclamations here, and they read, "Whereas the Springfield City Council is pleased to recognize Jonathan Bosbeckian, Linda Yarber, and Pat Voizin for all of their hard work and commitment to the Indian Orchard neighborhood and to the Indian Orchard Citizens Council. And whereas the Village of Indian Orchard was given its name in the year 1636 and is now one of the City of Springfield's 17 beautiful and unique neighborhoods. And whereas Indian Orchard is a community filled with history and tradition which began as an isolated mill village and has preserved its identity over the years even after becoming more fully encompassed by the city. And whereas the Indian Orchard Citizens Council was founded in 1976. And whereas the Indian Orchard Citizens Council is an advocate for residents and businesses of the Indian Orchard community. And whereas Jonathan Bosbeckian has dedicated 26 years of his life to serving as a member of the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, most recently as Vice President. Linda Yarber has dedicated 13 years of her life serving as a member of the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, most recently serving as President. And whereas Pat Voizin has dedicated 36 years of her life to serving as a member of the Indian Orchard Citizens Council under a number of positions, including serving as President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Springfield City Council hereby recognizes, honors, and commends Jonathan Bosbeckian, Linda Yarber, and Pat Voizin for their many years of service to the Board as members of the community, and we would like to thank them for all of their hard work during their tenure. Congratulations."
Go ahead. Speak, Jonathan.
Counsel Walsh.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. What a nice honor for people who have really worked hard in the City of Springfield. And I want to add my congratulations to you for your dedication to Indian Orchard, for your years of service. And for, when I read the proclamations and knew you were being honored, it made me think about some of the people that we've worked with over the years, like the late Karen Ledger, Linda Hammond, Gloria Mitchell. I mean, so many wonderful people and dedicated people are in Indian Orchard that care not only about their area of the city, but the City of Springfield as well. You know, from the time they tried to close the library to the take back the night. I mean, there's just always so many positive and good things going on in Indian Orchard, and I'm always happy to be involved and support you. And Jonathan, not only have you been there on the Board, but your business has certainly been such an asset to Indian Orchard. I asked Jonathan before the meeting how long the Nixon Publishing Company has been there. I think you said 84 years.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five years. So I mean, these are people that have a history in the City of Springfield, and I very nice of you to honor them, very well deserved. Enjoy your retirement.
Would you like to say a few words?
I haven't really compared anything, but I'm honored, as well as the other two, to be, it's a privilege and an honor to be honored by all of you here. I've had, I've been in front of the Council a number of times through the years, and it's a learning experience. For the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, I would come here for zone changes and for approval of certain things, variances and all that. It's been a while, but I learned how to deal with politi-- it's just, I got a good experience in these 26 years of politics. And Indian Orch-- I mean, Springfield is run well compared to a lot of cities. It's very efficient, believe it or not. And it's just great, all those years, and I'm just retiring into the sunset. Although I might run in a couple of years, we'll see. Now, I've known, I just want to mention something. I've known two of the councilors personally. One was John Lysick, who retired, because he was on the Indian Orchard Citizens Council in Orlando U. And it's, I just want to say, let me say one thing about Orlando, and I learned something. When he ran for City Council, he tried, was it two other times before?
Yes, two other times.
I know. You earned our respect.
Thank you.
You've never, can everybody hear this? You've never, you never forced yourself on us to vote for you, or like, you owe me, I'm on the Council with you. You're very dignified, and I admire that. And I didn't support you the first two times, but I did the third time. Maybe that made the difference. Me and a lot of people, a lot of people said that, that, it just all of a sudden came to us, you were very patient, and you took it. You were very gracious about your losing, but it made you, but you also, you gained more respect than anything.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. So that's what I want to say. In Orlando, the more I know you, the more I like you, you know.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for your service.
Thank you very much for honoring me this evening and my co-Board members. Some of the people sitting here know, even though I resigned and retired, I haven't shut up. And thank you.
I am honored to receive this award tonight, too, and I enjoyed working for Indian Orchard, and I am still working for the betterment of Indian Orchard. I am on my 16th year of helping out at the Indian Orchard Community Survival Center. And I enjoy working with the people, and I enjoy working with the politicians and all City councilors. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I'm now going to ask recently promoted Sergeant Joseph Pomante to come to the podium, please. Speaking of Indian Orchard, Officer Pomante, now Sergeant Pomante, served the Indian Orchard community as ordinance officer for many years. And all those years, he was very responsive to all of us. I would text him on the weekend, he would respond right away, and we're really going to miss him. But the Springfield Police Department is very fortunate to have Sergeant Joseph Pomante. And so I thought it was fitting, now that he has been promoted and he will no longer be our ordinance officer, that we recognize him on Indian Orchard night at City Hall with a proclamation that reads, "Whereas the Springfield City Council is pleased to recognize Sergeant Joseph Pomante for all of his hard work and commitment to the community of Indian Orchard. Whereas the Village of Indian Orchard was given its name in 1636 and is now one of the city's 17 beautiful and unique neighborhoods. Whereas Indian Orchard is a community filled with history and tradition which began as an isolated mill village and has preserved its identity over the years even after becoming more fully encompassed by the city. And whereas Sergeant Pomante has dedicated 25 years of his life to serving as a Springfield police officer and eight years as an ordinance officer to the Indian Orchard sector, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Springfield City Council hereby recognizes, honors, and commends Sergeant Joseph Pomante for his many years of dedication and commitment to the Indian Orchard sector and the Board and its members and the community, and we would like to thank him for all of his hard work during his tenure. Thank you for your service."
Thank you very much. It means a lot. The residents, the politicians, everybody made my job easy, but what a great little piece of the city to work, and it's just a wonderful neighborhood. So I appreciate this award more than you can imagine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more proclamation that will be presented by Counselor Hurst.
So it's an honor and privilege to be able to stand before you all this evening, as well as my colleagues, to give this proclamation to Bob Sharlin. Many of you have, Bob, feel free to come up to the podium. Many of you have heard about Bob, either read about Bob or have seen him on TV, and I know you're wondering why in the world are all of these cameras at our City Council meeting? And the reality is that they're not here to see all of you or to film all of you, they're here to film Bob. And they're here to film Bob because of his selfless actions and his driving desire to put smiles on the face, on the faces of our youth. I received a phone call maybe a month ago, and it was from one of my friends who asked me whether there was anything I could do for Bob to help him in his effort to get bikes to needy children. And so when I, I told him, sure, you know, whatever I can do, give Bob my number. Maybe five minutes later, Bob and I are having a conversation that almost brought me to tears. And anytime, you know, you can put your, you can put your own ego aside, anytime that you have the drive and determination to realize that life is never promised and we need to take advantage of every day that we have on this earth, and that you can do it with a smile and that you can do it by giving to others, is someone I will always support. And that's the reason why Bob is here today. And so Bob, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for, not only what you're doing for the citizens or the children of Springfield, but what you're doing for the children throughout Western Mass. And so this proclamation today was very easy, and if there's anything that I can do for you in the future, I will continue to do it. And I want to thank all of those who assisted me in helping you. As I told your story, it was very obvious that it was a worthy and noble cause that you're doing. So with that said, I'll read the proclamation and then I'll hand it over to Bob. "Whereas the Springfield City Council is always pleased to recognize an outstanding citizen and Marine Corps veteran for his hard work and tireless efforts giving back to the community. And whereas Robert Sharlin, a single father to his daughter, Maylie, has volunteered for many of her extracurricular activities, including becoming a Girl Scout troop leader and a coach to our softball team. And whereas Bob went to school to learn sign language and has been a volunteer instructor for the past 10 years, teaching automotive for the Willie Ross School of the Deaf. And whereas Bob also uses his ability to speak Vietnamese, Loaian, and Thai, to teach English to the Asian community, and was a teacher at Westover Job Course in the early 90s. And whereas Bob has been nominated as Vocational Instructor of the Year for two years in a row. And whereas after being diagnosed with a terminal neurodegenerative brain disease, Bob desired to have a larger impact on children, so he started Pedal Through Youth, a program designed to recondition bicycles and donate them to local children in need. And whereas in the last two months, Bob has donated over 200 bicycles to children in schools throughout Western Mass, including Gieberry Elementary School, Washington Elementary School, Bolin Elementary School, and the Springfield Day School. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Springfield City Council honors, recognizes, and thanks Bob Sharlin for his zealous dedication and commitment to the community."
Thank you.
I'm really, I'm pleased that you came to me and we were able to work together to get bikes together for two schools through your donors and mine. And like you said, we've been able to do over 200 bikes. I've also done two schools in Holyoke, as well as Chicopee. We've got more Springfield schools lined up, and we're going to keep the program going as long as I physically can. And then the guys from Competitive Edge and the Song Matter are going to take over after that with the guidance of my sister. Out of everything you listed, the most important thing that I did was raise my daughter, this little girl over here. Maylie is 22 years old now. When she was nine, I was given full custody of her. And I had, I went from being a part-time weekend dad to being a full-time dad, and I did every job that I could, from being a bouncer to a bodyguard, a mechanic full-time during the day. I have some of my personal friends here that have known me as a bouncer for many, many years. But I did everything I could because I was a single dad with no child support, no mother involved. That's why I got involved with softball, that's why I got involved in Girl Scouts. And that was the most important thing I did. And the only reason I was able to have that ambition, that drive to do that, is because I was raised by my single father, who drove up here from New York. He took it upon himself to raise me and my sister. And he wasn't even my biological father. And when him and my mother got divorced, he stepped up to the plate, and he says, "You may not be mine biologically, but you're my son no matter what." And throughout my life, there's never been a single time he ever referred to me as his stepson. I was always his boy or his son. And I've done the same for my daughter. So I'm honored and humbled by the award, but the reality is, I'm just a simple boy that came from upstate New York. I ended up here by chance. But now, seeing the looks on the kids' faces in the communities that we hit, the Berry Elementary School, 98% poverty, and a Washington Street school, with your help, we were able to give them 30 brand-new bikes. With the help of my friend Jeremiah from AAA, we donate helmets to every kid. Competitive Edge donates water bottles. And like I said, we're going to keep doing it, and long after I'm gone, it's going to live on. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate this.
We'll now take a brief recess before we get started with our regular meeting. Thank you. All right, we'll get started with our hearings meeting. We'll call Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Allen. Present. Counselor Rook. Present. Counselor Gomez. Present. Counselor Walsh. Here. Counselor Marcus Williams. Present. Present. Counsel Ash. Here. Counsel Twiggs absent. Counsel Shay. Present. Present. Counsel Fenton. Present. Present. Counsel Hurst. Present. Present. Counsel Bud Williams. Here. Here. Counsel Ramos. Present. Counselors and our guests, please rise and join me in a moment of silence.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number one.
Item number one is an application for a special permit for indoor amusement at the property known as 475 Sumner Avenue. This item was before the Council on 42417 for hearing, at which time it was continued to this meeting.
Continued prior to the opening of the hearing, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct.
All right. So this is a hearings meeting of the Springfield City Council. Is there anyone here for 475 Sumner Avenue? All right, please come forward. Proponents will be given 20 minutes to make their presentation. After that, the opponents will be given a, up to 20 minutes to give their thoughts with the Council, and after that, we'll have a five-minute rebuttal from both sides. Five-minute rebuttal for each side, and then counselors will be allowed to ask questions. And then after we close the hearing, we'll debate within ourselves. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Gokul Bratukh. My business is located in--
Sorry, if you can speak into the microphone and speak a little bit louder, please.
Oh, yeah. My business is located at 475 Sumner Avenue. My business is just the club, which holds like two ping-pong tables, a pool game, and an Indian game, which is also oriented for like birthday parties, graduation ceremony, and things like that. We have notified the Forest Park Association also regarding this. We are mainly the customer, like the Asian customer, the ethnic people, like from Asia. They can come around and, you know, instead of wandering around, they can entertain in my place. This is basically the alcohol-free place and non-smoking, and which tries to give like the entertaining place for most of the people around the neighborhood.
Is there anything else you would like to share with the Council?
That's it, what I have to say for now.
Counsel Shay.
Yes, President. I and along with Counselor Welsh, Walsh, had a chance to go to this property along with the Civic Association for Forest Park. And what he's trying to describe is that he has a room in the back of his business that has two entrances or exits. And it's simply a small social thing. He's got a little ping-pong table, he's got a, I think there's a pool table, a couple other game tables. And he issues a computer card with a chip on it so that the folks can come in and out. They're regulated.
Oh, yes.
And it's only going to be open, I think, up to 8:00 in the evening. It's not really something that he's attempting to do for the purposes of making a profit, but it's more or less a social center he's trying to establish for the folks. Is it from Nepal? Is that where you're from?
Yeah, I have like two ping-pong tables.
Right.
And a pool table.
Right. And so that people from that community have a place to go. He's got it highly regulated, it's controlled, it isn't going to cause a problem in the neighborhood. The Civic Association was more than enthusiastic about supporting this, and so I'm simply speaking to try and clarify what he's trying to do. And it's a fine operation, and the neighborhood has really no problem with it.
Thank you, Counselor. So anyone else? Counsel Walsh.
Counsel Shay has said, "I actually had the opportunity to attend the Forest Park Civic Association meeting the night that this was discussed, and it was well-received by the Board, and they were unanimously in support of it. But what was of interest in what the counselor has said and what the petitioner has said, that this is really kind of a hub, a community for the Nepalese community, and that in Forest Park, there are over 200 families that actually need a place that they can gather. So there was tremendous support for this community, and I think it's important to note that. So I wish you good luck, and I hope that this passes unanimously."
So anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this petition, please step forward. Say again, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Please step forward. Seeing none? So anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please step forward. Say again, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. All right, before we close the public hearing, are there any final questions for the petitioner from the Council? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Could you just tell us the hours of operation?
The hours of operation are from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Usually, it is, we have the eligibility until midnight, but our store is open until like 8:00 PM only. So we are closing up until 8:00, 8:00 PM.
So 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
That's right, sir.
Monday through Friday, or?
Throughout seven days a week.
All days of the week?
Right.
Including Saturday and Sunday?
Yeah, including weekends.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Council? Before we close the public hearing, are there any other questions from the Council? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Are there any final comments, motions, or amendments from the Council? Counsel Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to the testimony that was just given by the applicant, that he'll be open 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, there are no conditions that I see in here relative to hours of operation. So I would just like to make a motion that we add a condition number eight, and that we allow the hours of operation. Let's give them, I propose we give them one hour on both sides, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Motion made by Counsel Fenton, seconded by Counsel Gomez. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Any final comments, motions, and/or amendments? We'll call Mr. Clerk. As amended?
On approving the amended special permit, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twiggs absent. Counsel Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, special permit is approved. Counsel Edwards, on the reasons.
Thank you, sir. The specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use is about to adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for by the proper operation of the proposed use, to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of finding.
All in favor of accepting the reasons, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you. Item number two, Mr. Clerk.
Item number two is an application for a special permit to allow the construction of 14 new residential units at the property known on Boston Road between Lamont Street and Morton Street.
Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to move this matter to the next hearings meeting, and the reason I say that is because I'm not sure if the Pine Point Community Council submitted a letter to this body, but they did not approve the special permit or the zone change for tonight's meeting. And I would like the opportunity for Mr. Graham, who I think can attest to the fact that there's been a great lack of communication over the last several years regarding this matter, and for us, for the opportunity to allow us to all be on the same page, including myself, I think it's appropriate to move this to the next hearings matter, which would allow the Pine Point Community Council to call us one more time in hopes to reconsider the vote that they did not vote in favor of tonight. So I'd like to make that motion.
Motion made to table the matter by Counsel Marcus Williams, seconded by Counsel Walsh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? The matter will be tabled until the next hearings meeting. Item number three, Mr. Clerk.
Item number three is an application for a special permit to operate a motor vehicle service station in--
Opposed? The ayes have it. The matter will be tabled until the next hearings meeting. Item number three, Mr. Clerk.
Item number three is an application for a special permit to operate a motor vehicle service station in drive-up service window at the property known as 487 Taylor Street.
Mr. President.
Counselor Rook.
Just for the record, I wanted to disclose my brother Tom is the attorney for this petitioner.
Okay, thank you. Clerk will make a note. He's disclosing that the relationship with the petitioner is attorney. Item number three, 20 minutes given to the proponents. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. President and fellow councillors. My name is Attorney Thomas Rook with an office in the local vicinity at 73 Chestnut Street. To my right is Johnny K. Ruse, the principal and sole owner of Armory Street Holdings LLC. And next to me is Hal Cherub, the engineer and architect for the project. We're requesting a special permit for a motor vehicle service station in a drive-up service window at the site that was formerly known as the F.L. Roberts-Senoco Station on Lower Armory Street at the intersection of Taylor Street. For those of you that may remember Johnny, Johnny applied for a special permit and appeared before this council about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, for a racing mart facility at the corners of Carew and Armory Street. He worked closely with Counselor Fenton at that time in the Neighborhood Council, and I think Counselor Fenton would echo my concerns and my remark that Johnny Cruz fulfilled every one of his obligations and commitments that he made to both the Neighborhood Council and Counselor Fenton. He owns approximately 25 service stations between Cape Cod and Springfield, and is presently negotiating to open up his site in North Adams. The proposed site, the proposal is to demolish the existing building. Johnny has also purchased three parcels of land on Federal Street directly behind the proposed lot on Armory and Taylor Streets. Two of the sites were two-story family homes that were abandoned, with a site of numerous building code violations and homeless persons living there. And he leveled those two properties, and he had also owned a vacant lot in between those two. The proposal is very similar to what Johnny owns at Carew and Armory Street, in addition to what he owns at the racing mart on Sumner Avenue in Springfield. I have met with Counselor Gomez, and Walter Kroll, who's the president of Hill McKnight Neighborhood Association, as well as Brian McFarland. We met at the site today, and all persons were very enthusiastic and happy with the proposal. They believe it was a, certainly enhanced the neighborhood. They think it's the ideal location. And by way of information, Johnny is suggesting or telling me that there will be approximately 45 security cameras on the building, 25 of them on the exterior. About two and a half years ago, there was a murder at the site of Sumner Avenue, and Johnny provided the videotapes from his security camera to the police department, which was instrumental in identifying and arresting the individual. So in addition to the improved lighting, the security system I'm going to suggest he was going to be state-of-the-art, and he's always been helpful and cooperative with the local police departments. I think this is a great opportunity to improve that neighborhood. Both Walter Kroll and Brian McFarland indicated that personally, as individual citizens, they were supportive of it, but until their council voted on it, they couldn't endorse as members of the Neighborhood Council. I think this is a great opportunity to improve this area. The total cost of the investment is approximately $3.5 million. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for that section, that corner, to improve and look better and preserve crime. Johnny tells me that at the Carew and Armory Street site, there are 15 employees, and every single one of them are Springfield residents. He's anticipating somewhere between 25 and 30 employees being hired at this location, and I would suggest that it's going to be the same thing with nearly 100% Springfield residents. So it's an opportunity for both part-time and full-time jobs, to provide opportunities for young individuals, retirees who want to come back and work part-time. If there's any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them, or Johnny or Hal can answer them.
Alright, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Please step forward. Say again, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Counselor Gomez.
So today I had the chance to meet with Attorney Rook and some members of the Hill McKnight, no, not Hill McKnight, McKnight Neighborhood Council. And for the first time, I always talk about how I guess I'm the ward that has so many neighborhood boards that I have to deal with, and for the first time, I didn't think I had to deal with a ward that's primarily not in my district. So it was kind of a good conversation, because it's on the line of Armory Street, which essentially, it's in Ward 1, but for some reason, which I was going to ask Phil, how does that work, just for future reference, on why it went to Hill McKnight and not Aqua?
Why did I tell him to go to?
No, 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 because I was confused when Attorney Rook had contacted me and said we had a meeting with McKnight area, when that is kind of, it's still Ward 1, and I've never, and Hill McKnight, oh, not Hill McKnight, I'm sorry, keep on saying that, McKnight has never been into the Worthington Street area. I know it's like a fine line.
Well, I mean...
Because, no, because I've, in the past, when we did the garages on Taylor Street before, they went to Aqua. So I want to know at what point does McKnight have jurisdiction in that kind of area?
Well, I mean, I would have to say that was probably my judgment call, because...
No, no problem.
Armory Street is really the border of where McKnight starts. In my conversations with the garages with Aqua, and Carol was the president at the time, her response to me was that, you know, that's really kind of out of our way. So to me, the neighborhood that kind of had more of an impact on the particular development was McKnight. It literally is across the street. So I just, it was a judgment call by me that I thought McKnight would weigh in a little more than Aqua would, but that was my...
No, it's just it kind of...
Yeah.
It just puts me in a position that I'm in favor of something, but I want to listen to some constituents, but the constituents don't necessarily, I don't speak kind of...
Yeah, I mean, it's the same issue I have when we're in Boston Road, depending on what side, because there is no, you know, it's either Indian Orchard, it's Pine Point, or it's 16 Acres, and it's kind of a call of who do we think has the, you know, the bigger say in a particular project.
Because in that kind of corner, I would have liked for Lower Liberty Heights Action, which is Franklin Street, because that kind of, because right there on, it, all it does is cross the bridge and then some Aqua and all of them to meet with them. But, you know, in essence, I just was kind of confused, because then, I did have a good conversation with them. Both of the gentlemen cannot speak for the board, so they have to wait to meet together, and I guess they're scheduled to meet tomorrow. But me, knowingly, the pressure of this, of this project, and the timeframe, I just want to go about it the right way, and I want to make sure that, you know, and I'm really happy to hear that 15 of those resident, I mean, of those jobs might go to Springfield residents, and how the gentleman bought the parcels around it, so there's no kind of a butters around him. He's bought every single property around him, am I right?
Correct.
So there's no butters, there's anybody that we need to talk to, other than that Neighborhood Council.
Well, yeah, I mean, technically, there's a, on Federal Street, there are residences, but they're not, they don't directly abut. I think the closest, closest building that would have butted this would be the community center for that.
Right.
And then I think the other side is a car lot, so...
Alright. Well, primarily, on my side of the fence, I'm totally in favor of this project, because, you know, that corner, and it's vacated, it's empty, it's going to bring lighting, public safety with the cameras. We see that that whole neighborhood behind it has went through a revitalization. It's the same people that own Outing Park, and they've acquired the Indian Motorcycle Building, and we've seen, we've seen that... We've seen that the good that's been going on in our city, and from what I've known, I know there's another one of your gas stations, sir, in Ward 2, which is kind of the same situation across the street from Our Lady of Hope. And then we have another, we have another one that's in, think Ward 7 in your district, that's in Sumner Ave, on Sumner Ave?
Ward 6.
Ward 6, okay, so it's considered Ward 6. So I would like to think that this is a friendly developer. He's done business with us. There hasn't been an issue, there hasn't been a problem, and I don't think there's an issue, for the most part, with, you know, the confusion of where this lies and what district, to be able to support this, so then we don't waste any more time in making sure that this thing is developed within the next three to four months. And that's my position on it. I just was, I needed to ask Phil that question, because I was confused. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone wishing to speak in favor, please step forward. Counselor Walsh.
Use the one on Sumner Avenue frequently. And I like to go in there, because it's clean, it's well-lighted, there's a very nice staff in there, and it's a good feeling when you're going there. And also, I attended the opening of the Carew and right near Our Lady of Hope. So I know that these are good businesses, and they do well in the neighborhoods. And I'm happy to hear about the employees. I'm just wondering, is there a timeline on this, you know, for when you want to get started? Are there any hitches to getting this going?
Well, we got the approval from the DPW with the plans that have been submitted. The gas company shut off the gas supply. I believe the DPW was there today shutting off the water supply. So things are going to move very quickly. I think within 30 days, you'll start to see the demolition of the property.
You're not that far from Springfield Technical Community College. Will you be doing any outreach for hiring there, or typically, where do the employees come from?
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea, Counselor.
Well, thank you very much. And I'm going to vote in support of this, because I think it's a very good business, and being a patron, I'm happy to see them locate somewhere else in the city, because I think it's going to be a huge improvement to that area.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Please step forward. Seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Say again, is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Are there any final questions for the petitioner? Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not a question, but I just want to reiterate some of the points that were earlier made. The corner of Armory and Carew has been cleaned up since this developer has come to town. We were originally, as a neighborhood and a community, apprehensive about seeing that site demolished and redeveloped. There had been proposals in the past by the Bolduc family and others to do that, and those proposals failed, and for good reason. This development that's taken place there has really revitalized that corner. I stop there all the time for gas. I run through that area all the time. The place looks really nice. They keep it clean, landscaping is top-notch, and they've done a wonderful job complying with all the aspects of the site plan. And we were extremely detailed when we were going through that analysis. So I want to thank the developer for his commitment to the community. Before he first came, because I said about the apprehension, I looked him up to figure out what other kinds of projects had he done, and where have we been, what kind of job are we looking at here? And one of the, one of the last developments that I had seen he had done successfully was in Yarmouth, Mass. And anybody that's been there knows that there is a pretty rigorous permitting body and the planning board there that takes pretty seriously the beachy character of that town, and that project was also really well-received. So I have nothing but positive reviews. It's a place that cops like to hang out for the right reasons. It's a place that's been lighted and well-secured, and I have nothing but positive things to say about this developer. I have every reason to believe he'll continue to do the same.
Thank you.
Counselor Shay.
Yes, I'm just providing for you all to take in favor of this development. It has one on Sumner Ave, it's well-maintained, it's clean, it's an asset, it's kind of a detriment to the neighborhood. And looking at the conditions, we know of a lot of them, but I think there's an interesting one there to further enhance the neighborhood over 16, in which they're going to take out about four curb cuts and reestablish a true government, and they will add the encampment of the neighborhood and participation of the cops, which is quite supportive of this one.
Any final questions? Counselor Williams. Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Counselor Williams. Just a question, it sounds great. Is the, is the, is the gas station, the store, is going to be positioned similar to where the current one is, facing Armory Street, kind of thing?
Hal, will you answer that question?
Yes.
So same general position of it?
Yes.
And I got confused when you talked about Federal Street, which is behind it. Isn't it kind of hilly? Isn't there like a big grade, upgrade? I mean, you know what I'm saying, a hill behind it?
Yes.
Incline, thank you.
Yes, there's a difference of approximately between two and eight feet difference in grade on, in the back on Federal Street. But we propose retaining walls, and also behind the, on top of the retaining wall, there will be a six-foot fence, and behind the fence, also on Federal, on Federal Street will be a guardrail, too. This was, I guess, a concern that was raised during the site plan review, and I do have the elevation of the wall, the way it would look like in the back, behind the building, so...
So I saw there's no curb cuts on Federal Street or anything?
No, currently, there are, there are four curb cuts that we will be closing on.
Yeah, I was just considering, the safety factor.
Right, no, you can't access, there's a difference in grade between...
In addition, Counselor Allen, there will be a guardrail behind the fence.
That's great. So that's all been taken into consideration and taken care of. That sounds great. Thank you.
Counselor Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. It's been said, the racing mart family has been in Springfield. I voted for their first racing mart in Springfield, St. James Avenue. And you look to no better developer in the Commonwealth. When Johnny says he's going to do something, he's going to do it, from Sumner Avenue to St. James, to Carew, even in Holyoke, took a bad corner in Holyoke and made it a really, a gym. So I plan to support this. And as someone said, runs the cleanest stores in an urban area. You go in his stores, you might as well be in Long Meadow or Amherst. Keeps them very clean. So he raises the bar in the neighbors. I really mean that, because I get coffee in some of them. They got 99-cent coffee, so I still can go there. But really, he runs, they have, they have very, stores are clean, very professional, and I'm very serious. You've raised the bar, and I've always told your dad, what a great job, and you've done a good job. Your father has trained you very well. So I plan to support this, and you find no better attorney in the city to represent you than the barrister attorney, Attorney Rook.
Thank you, Counselor.
Alright, before we close the public hearing, are there any final questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, that closes the public hearing. Any final comments, motions, and/or amendments? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the petition, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Twigs, absent Counselor Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst. Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient, permit is approved. On the reasons.
The specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for by the proper operation of the proposed use, to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of finding.
All in favor of accepting the reasons, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item four is an application for a special permit to operate a motor vehicle repair and maintenance facility at the location known as 501 St. James Avenue.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Megan Leonard. I'm at 70 Chestnut Street, Springfield.
Juan Maldonado, 70 Chestnut Street, Springfield.
You have 20 minutes to address the counsel.
So we are looking to develop the property, a small portion of 501... So, we are looking to, uh, develop the property, um, a small portion of 501 St. James Avenue into a automotive accessories, um, store installations. Uh, we wanna offer in this location, um, accessories for window tinting, alarm and remote starts, um, any audio installations, HID and LED headlight bulbs, um, just stuff to help improve your cars, but we also really wanna focus on the security systems because, as we know, there is a small problem with break-ins in the city. Um, and we definitely wanna help the citizens within the city to protect their cars and their belongings a lot better. Um, the location has been updated. Um, we have a garage that has three bays that will allow us, uh, to offer a lot of work. We plan on hiring certified technicians to help with the installations, um, some of which who are fifteen-year veterans in their service departments, uh, with the window tinting and, and alarm and remote starts. Uh, we also plan to offer up employment positions for approximately three full-time members of a staff for management of the office, and those will, of course, go to, uh, Springfield citizens with, with hopes. And we really, um, just wanna offer a lot of great accessories to the, to the, excuse me, the neighborhood. My apologies, I'm a nervous speaker. Um, in the past, the building has offered automotive, um, services in that location. Uh, we're not going to be doing any automotive repair or any kind of mechanic work there, adjust strictly. Like I said, the alarm and remote starts, so there will be some wiring work, which is the permit that we're requiring.
Is there anything else you would like to share with us?
Um, is there anything else? I think that's about it. We really hope just to bring a, a, a great new piece to the city of Springfield and to the night neighborhood.
Counselor Walsh.
Uh, yes, excuse me, I did not hear the beginning of your presentation. What is your relationship to the business? Is it a woman-owned business?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is it a woman-owned business?
Actually, um, I'm sorry, my fiance, Juan Maldonado, owns the business, and I'll be the executive manager over in the office.
Obviously, I would, uh, pay special attention to any businesses owned by, by women and give, give them a shout-out and, and, and wish them success. Do you have any other properties? Is this your first time doing this, or is there a, has the racing market other locations? Are there other, something else we can look to?
Um, previously, actually, my fiance currently owns V Race Works, also right on St. James Avenue at 556. Uh, that business has been successfully running for three years now. Um, that offers up performance car parts, um, so we're kind of bringing the community together.
And I certainly recognize, um, I can't pronounce the last name, but I certainly recognize the business owner for National Ambulances. Are you a, a neighbor or a friend of this, or?
We own the property.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Vet and LLC, taking National Ambulances, we own the property at 501 St. James Avenue, and, uh, 51 St. James Avenue Maintenance will be a facility that will be housed in that location.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just had a question in regards to the parking. Uh, I, I realize that there's also concerns expressed at the site, the, uh, the special permit review. Uh, can you share your thoughts on how you, you intend to mitigate that?
Um, yes, I did see the, um, concern over the parking spaces in the front of the building. Those are not necessary. We do have parking on the side of the building, as well as ample parking in the back of the building as well.
All right, and I know this is, I mean, just out of curiosity, I know there's the, a business with, uh, that, that does the same operation within this, this view, so I, parking is especially important for that, so thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Counselor Gomez.
In this location, there's, uh, other three bays. Are you guys gonna be using those bay also, or just the front, the front building? Cause my, I, I've had friends that been, are doing exactly what you're doing in that same location. I know Danny, too, so I know you guys been toughing it out over at V Works. Uh, I just wanna commend you guys on staying strong and staying at that location. I know it's been a hard three years, but you keep on pushing, you know, things open up. But the question that I'm getting at before I praise that was, I know behind the building there was three other bays. Is that included in your, in your operation, or is it just the front building?
Um, we will be using the two front bays mainly. There is one bay in the back that we have access to that will only be for employees to bring cars through.
All right, cause some of that building is connected in different ways. Um, does it still have like, uh, cause I know it has a paint station inside of there. Are you guys gonna be doing anything like that?
No, no, we don't have the paint station in our garage.
And you're, in your part, on the right-hand side, that's the part you're in, not the inside?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please step forward.
Hat-trick.
Seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
My, oh.
Yes, my, good afternoon. Sorry about my grandson. He's a very sick baby. He is totally, totally, he's four years old. He have generic disease.
Can you, um, speak into the microphone and state your name and address, please, for the record?
Hope McBath, Twenty-One Manford Street. I lived there for twenty-one years. And, um, my concern is that when I'm walking in the street, nobody clean their sidewalks. They park their car on the sidewalk. I have to come out on St. James Main Street to push my baby stroller or his wheelchair because they park on the walkway. Nobody cleans snow. They empty their cars, they trash, everything is there. I'm not saying that they can't get their license. Last week, I hear so many noise over there with this car engine, vroom, 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 ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night. They're blowing horns, making noise all over there. And my concern is that what time they supposed to close, what time they supposed to open, and what time they supposed to clean snow? Because some of them clean snow one o'clock, two o'clock at night. I have to sleep and I pay taxes. And I lived there twenty-one years, and now if somebody wanna buy my house, they can buy it, I can go, but I'm not living like this. So that's my concern.
Thank you. So anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. All right, we will allow for a five-minute rebuttal.
Uh, pardon, there may be a misunderstanding of the properties. We just acquired that building within the past year, and it was abandoned, had trash everywhere. We renovated the building, uh, moved out everything, cleaned everything out. So I'm not sure if, uh, maybe there's a misunderstanding of the properties, and the business is not open late at night either. And they're, they haven't, actually, they're just about to start operations. Without this permit, they really can't start operations. So I'm not sure. That was all.
There was there last week.
One second, ma'am. We're, we're still on the, uh, petitioners. Uh, the petitioners have five minute, have a five-minute rebuttal. They have four and a half minutes left. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Please step forward.
Um, I did wanna mention that for the record, uh, once we do get established, right now, we are working to renovate the showroom. Um, I don't believe we've been making, haven't had any severe tools in there to be making any kind of loud noises at night. Um, we can definitely work to keep those to minimum. The only thing we've done is break up some grout, um, and tiles. But just for the record, once we do open up, our hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday from eight AM until five PM. So, no late nights, no loud noises at the night. And we'll absolutely make sure to keep the property maintained and keep it cleaned up. We respect our city and especially all the hard work that Vet and LLC has put into that building. We definitely wanna maintain the love in the city for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have three and a half minutes left. If there's anything you would like to add? All right, seeing none. Now we will allow for a five-minute rebuttal from the opposition.
That's all my concern is that they have to have responsibility, that we live there and they supposed to respect us, and so we respect them. Everybody want a business and to have life. I'm disabled for fifteen years. I may look healthy, I have fourteen back surgery. And if I walk and I fall, they supposed to clean their snow. I have to clean my snow. I have to pay sixty dollars to clean my snow. So they should be able to clean their snow and stop at their cars on the sidewalk and all that noise. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. All right, seeing none. Counselor Gomez.
I just had a question. Um, I have a question on, sorry, excuse me. You said you live on Montford Street? Um, we're in Montford, what, what do you mean, this is not, this is.
Counselor Gomez, we, we can't, we can't hear you.
Oh.
Can you?
I'll, I'll get back at our after. You live on this street, right? Okay. Um, this is the same street, so you now live. Sorry. Oh, you live at six, you, you? Is that what you?
What?
He needs to grow a damn back. Oh, sorry.
Can we, can we, um, speak into the microphone so the folks at home can tell, can listen in?
Um, so I walked over there to ask her where exactly she lived on Montford Street because obviously we don't have numbers on there, and because I do know on Montford that there is a sixth auto, uh, and there is also, you know, a lot of, uh, car repairs on that line. So I was trying to just, um, figure out where that loud noise was coming from that she stated in her, uh, her rebuttal. So I wanted to make sure that if it was specified, that if the loud noise was coming from this specific location, which, um, has been abandoned, that you state, yes. So there's nothing going on in that, that place at all?
Nothing except renovations.
Nothing but renovations.
Once they obtain the permit, then they'll start operations.
So then there'll be the so, um, um, like, location or store that's in that location right there? They're the only ones that's gonna be there for the moment?
Yes, for the moment.
All right.
Any final questions from the council? Counselor Walsh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I actually have a question for, uh, Phil, if he's still here. And it, um, it addresses one of the concerns brought up, uh, by the neighbor. With the issuance of the special permit, the, does that, uh, I'm trying to phrase this right, would that cover sidewalks? I mean, i- if we, uh, the concern was raised about sidewalks, having a stroller or having a wheelchair and being able to walk unimpeded, is that something that we would have to add, or is that like implied, uh, with this permit that sidewalks have to be clear?
That's, that's usually a standard condition that I add.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
I, I didn't add it here, but, I mean, that was my concern with the cars parking out front, cause I've seen that, where the, the, cause part of the cars are sticking into the public way, so it's impossible to walk with the cars parked there. But I, but that certainly can be conditioned, that the public way needs to be maintained.
Okay.
I mean, technically, there's not a sidewalk in front of this building. It's just all paved, so there's, there's a little, but certainly, the paved part of the public way should be maintained free of snow.
Okay, well, uh, at the appropriate time, I think I'd like to add that just to make sure that that's not a, that that concern is addressed, that the public way should be maintained.
Yeah, and just previously, just for everybody's knowledge, there was an auto body place in this location, you know, four or five years ago, so I think that's probably where a lot of the noise came from. It was kind of an auto body slash junkyard that was being operated out of this site, so.
And I'd like to ask the petitioner if that's something that is agreeable, that you will keep the sidewalks clear?
Absolutely.
Any final questions for the petitioner or for the opposition? Before we close the public hearing, are there any final questions? Counselor Gomez.
Because you guys are renting, isn't that in your contract that the person you're renting from is supposed to be cleaning up the sidewalk? So you shouldn't be agreeing to that question. You guys should say it's in your contract that the owners that are, are renting to you are the ones inclined to make sure that snow removal is done. Not trying to put the, um, the buck on you, but that's just the truth. So, maintain the front of your store, but maintain, uh, relationship with your, with your land, uh, your landlord, that he makes sure that's cleared on a timely man, uh, manner cause, so people can get through. Because like Phil had stated, drone me, that there's no sidewalk there, and I know that, and people, she's right. People have used that as a, everything as a driveway. It's, it's a, but now that there's a new owner, um, we're building new relationships, um, good luck, hopefully everything works out for you guys, but just, uh, please make sure that we maintain, we're gonna stipulate it on the contract. It's gonna be, I don't know, Mr. President, can we stipulate something on this, um, and amend it when it has nothing to do with the petitioner, has to do with the landowner?
Um, Counselor Walsh has a, um, a, is gonna be making a motion for an amendment.
Okay.
At the appropriate time.
No, I just wanna make sure that it's, to emphasize that it's, that it's the landlord instead of necessarily the petitioner. Thank you.
Any final questions for the petitioner or for the opposition? Before we close the public hearing? Seeing none. Final comments, motions, amendments? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment that looks like will be number eleven, that the public way should be maintained.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Edwards. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Any final comments, motions, amendments? Counselor Allen.
Uh, during the process, uh, the petitioners, uh, mentioned they'd be open Monday to Saturday, I think, eight to five, is that what he said?
Yes.
Uh, I would like to offer that amendment, that the normal business hours are Monday to Friday, eight to five, given that we have this issue with noise, et cetera.
No kidding.
Motion made by Counselor Allen, is there a second?
Wow.
Seconded by Counselor Fenton. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Counselor Hurst, on the motion.
Which you were going to operate, is that accurate? That's all you need.
That's it, yes.
Isn't the hea, is the hearing open?
All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Any final comments, motions, amendments? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, as amended.
On approving the amended special permit, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Twigs, absent, Counselor Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Absent, Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, special permit is approved. Counselor Edwards, on the reasons. Counsel Edwards, under reasons.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of the findings.
All in favor of the reasons say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Item number five, Mr. Clerk.
Item number five is an application for a special permit to allow for motor vehicle sales at the property known as 720 Berkshire Avenue.
Name and address for the record, please.
Danny Hanush, uh, property owner, 720 Berkshire Ave.
You have 20 minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Mr. President, city councilors, thanks for having us tonight. I, uh, put together a little package just to show what we're presenting. I don't know if I have to pass it out now or... So with me I have, uh, Mr. Kelly and, uh, Wayne Doyle, who are my tenants, um, are applying for a used car license at the dealership. I bought the dealership in December of 2016. Wasn't aware that when you buy a property, you have to reapply for a special permit for the license. Uh, it's been on the property since 1995. We went through the site plan review. I put together a, um, a site plan and, uh, plot plan for, uh, what we're looking to do. And we went and met with Pine Point, and, uh, they had a few, uh, comments just to paint the fence and mark the lot. Uh, and I believe we did both of those since then. That was two weeks ago, so, um, I, again, I bought the lot in December. Uh, there was a tenant in there. I, uh, no longer have any tenants in there. When I bought the property, um, I had to sign off with the city solicitor because there were code violations. So before I even closed on the property, I had cleared all the code violations with the building department and everyone, and, uh, um, we rehabbed whatever we had to do with the property, and, um, not sure what else. Wayne, you have any comments or?
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Wayne Doyle. I'm the owner of Payless Auto, and so is my wife Kelly here behind me. We are interested in opening up Payless Auto at 720 Ave, 720 Berkshire Ave. Uh, myself and Mr. Hanush have spent about the last month, well, myself, working schedule of 5:00 a.m. in the morning till about 9:00, 9:30 at night, getting this property up to repair. Um, it's sad to see that someone had, had a business in Springfield that actually ran it and conducted it like this. Uh, three or four giant dumpsters of, of trash being removed, uh, the inside, the outside. I was painting on Sunday, um, just trying to get this property to look good in Springfield. Um, we do have Payless Auto in Palmer. We've been established for quite a few years in Palmer. We also own Payless Auto Auctions. I grew up in Springfield. Um, I have a liking for the city. I look forward to having a business in the city, and I, I think it would be a, definitely an asset to that area. Uh, the building does have a, quite the prior record, is what I'm told. Uh, a lot of drug dealings, a lot of, uh, a lot of the negatives. Like I said, I, I can't believe someone ran a business like that. Um, we have put up signs already, um, in case there is still any of the old crowd that might think that it's still some, someone with the same ownership. Um, the signs are no drug or alcohol on premise. Um, we've installed the security cameras to make sure of that. Uh, I was a constable in Springfield for seven years. Um, I've seen a lot of the, a lot of the worst parts of the city. Um, that area right there should never have been a worse part. It's, it's actually a really nice area. We'd like to make sure it's nice again.
Thank you.
Counsel Hurst.
I just wanna rise in support of this project. Uh, actually, um, you know, this, this project is, uh, probably a block away, um, from where I grew up on Brickett Street. And so when it was in, when there were a number of code violations, uh, I, I would hear about it every day. Um, and I would hear about it from my parents, who still live on Brickett Street. This property is an eyesore. Uh, so the fact that you are invested in this city, the fact that you know, uh, what this particular area used to look like, I'm hopeful, um, that you will bring it back to, to, to what I knew it as, uh, as a kid. Uh, and I know the Hanush family, uh, very well, um, and I know, uh, that you guys are very respectable, uh, business people in this community and the surrounding area. So I have full confidence in, in you guys, that you'll make this project a success.
Thank you.
Counsel Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, like Counselor Hurst, I also grew up in the neighborhood, right off of Berkshire Ave, on Redford Drive, and, uh, my grandmother, God rest her soul, lived in the elderly complex almost directly across the street, but not quite. So I, I would also thank you for taking interest in a property that's been blighted for a while now. Uh, I just had a couple of follow-up questions. Uh, I, I did notice in this, the packet that I had not seen previously, uh, some graffiti on the building. Has that been cleaned up, or do you have a plan to clean that up?
We did that. We did that. So I apologize, I didn't tell you about the packet. So the black and white pictures were previously with the code violations, and then I took some progress pictures in the last pages.
Oh, okay.
Uh, almost the finished project before he has a definitive answer if he can operate there.
Oh, great, no, it looks great. And, uh, I, I know the Hanush, Hanush family, uh, has come before us before, and you have a great reputation in the city. But I, I know that, uh, you, can you rest, or can you give me some reassurance that the site won't be used for, you know, junk vehicles and things of that nature as well?
Sure.
Which I always ask when, uh, this type of petitioner comes before us.
Absolutely. Like, uh, like I had stated, we own Payless Auto in Palmer. Um, we have a 46 car license in Palmer, or 43 car license. Uh, typically, we only keep about 35 on the lot due to the fact of the way it's laid out. Um, if there was, God forbid, a car that caught on fire or whatever, I think 46 would be a little too crowded.
Okay.
So we, uh, we're always making sure that we run things properly, effectively, and, uh, you take every, every measure into consideration.
And the last point I'll, I'll ask about is, is it, is it terms of the delineation between the parking and the public right of way? So can you speak to that as well, if, in terms of the changes? Uh, it states that, yeah, right.
Yeah, so we, uh, we do have to just order those signs for the, um, Mr. Dromie mentioned in the conditions, and we're gonna put them where the client parking is. I think I laid them out in the plan, um, where the customer parking is and where the other ones are. But when I bought that property, there were at least 100 cars that we towed off there, trailers, um, just a lot of stuff, way more than I, we even have it laid out on, on that. Uh, so it would be very organized and, uh...
Well, I'm happy to hear it. It looks like a great, uh, great addition to the community, and I look forward to attending the grand opening, whatever that is.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please step forward. Say again, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Please step forward. Seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Seeing none. Are there any final questions for the petitioner? Before we close the public hearing, are there any final questions? Seeing none, I will now close the hearing. Any final comments, motions, and/or amendments? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the petition, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twigs, absent Counsel Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams. Absent Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, special permit is approved. Counsel Edwards, under reasons.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of the finding.
All in favor of the reasons say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number six.
Item number six is an application for a special permit for motor vehicle, for motor vehicle sales at the property known as 248 Laconia Street.
Yes, my name is Thomas Connors. I'm here for, uh, looking for a special permit to buy and sell used cars from 248 Laconia Street. I purchased it about three months ago, March 17th. Uh, it includes a residence, about 1,000 square foot residence, and a garage that's 1,382 square feet, including the office. Uh, it was empty when I bought it, not rundown, but overgrown. Everything's been cleaned up. And what I am proposing to do is, um, sell cars strictly over the internet. There's gonna be no repairs done out of there, mechanical or auto body, uh, no, no lighting or anything, nothing's gonna change. Uh, it is zoned business, and, uh, obviously pay business taxes on it. Uh, we're bordered by, on three sides by businesses. There's a used car lot behind me, an auto repair, uh, facility next to me that includes a residence also. And on the left is a very large landscaping company. Uh, so far, we've cleaned the property up really nice. Everything looks good. Unfortunately, I had to buy it first. Takes a while to get in front of you guys, so I'm kinda doing it backwards here. But, um, that's about it. If you have any questions, pretty cut and dried. I can put about six to eight cars in the garage comfortably, and that's how I plan
Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just one quick question. Uh, in regards, this is a pretty unique situation from, you know, selling cars from a house. I, I don't think I've ever...
Well, it's, it's actually, it's a business property. There just happens to be a residence on it.
Exactly, right. It looks like a house.
Yeah.
And in terms of, uh, the signage, I was just curious to know, how would you intend to, uh, kind of display these cars without the actual signage not being allowed to be the, the property itself?
How would I display them? Over the internet and word of mouth, mostly, yes.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please step forward. Seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Say again, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Seeing none. Any final questions for the petitioner? Counsel Allen.
Uh, can I, uh, speak to Phil Dromie, please? I just wanna make sure, I didn't read all the conditions exactly, but in your, in your assessment, Phil, it says, you recommend, uh, there be a condition of the special permit, and you mentioned it a couple of times. Are the conditions you've put here adequate, or are you suggesting an additional condition? It's at the bottom of the first page. If approved, the staff would strongly recommend that this be a condition of the special permit.
Well, I, I mean, condition number four talks about that, that all vehicles for sale shall be stored inside the garage.
Right, so...
This would, this would not allow, you know, your typical used car lot where you'd have the cars outside. These would all be inside the garage.
Right, so you're saying that, but, condition number four covers that?
Yeah, I believe that...
I didn't know if there was something additional needed. Okay, great, thank you.
Counsel Fenton.
Just a quick, a couple of questions for the petitioner, Mr. President. Sir, what, what will you do with the house?
The house, I have two children, two of my children living in it.
And this'll restrict the number of cars, was it, to eight? The conditions indicate that there'll be no accessory signs mounted to the wall. Let me read here. Uh, no accessory wall signs and/or ground signs indicating the sale of used cars on the property. Do you intend to have any signs?
Well, I believe you have to have a sign. I believe it's a, a state mandate. Uh, I don't know the exact size, but I would say approximately 10, uh, minimum of about 10 by 2, maybe to go over the door or something like that. You have to have something to, um, show you're there, but that's...
Phil, can you speak to that? Because I don't know, how will he show he's there if he can't have a wall sign or an accessory sign?
Well, my impression, and I didn't realize you have to have a sign, but my impression, this would be done through the internet. You would, you would show the cars on the sale, uh, over the internet. So there's not necessarily a reason to have a sign for someone driving down wouldn't stop and say, oh, there's a used car lot. So my thing was, was if all the sales are being done over the internet and the, and the cars are being stored in the garage, there's really no need for a sign that says, Joe's Used Car Lot, whatever, however you wanted to do it, so. That would have to be amended if he wants a sign, though.
What, what is the current use of the garage?
Right now, it's empty.
What was the previous use of the garage?
I, I don't know exactly what, but I think it was used for auto repair at one time. Um, I don't know the, the whole history.
The property's actually zoned industrial A, you know, Verge Street and...
I see that, but we do have, you know, residential developments and industrial A zones across the city.
Well, we did, we canvassed the area.
And, um, I'd also, you know, point out that to the south, we indicate that there's a single-family ho, uh, house zoned industrial A.
Cor, oh, yeah, there's, there's absolutely single-family and two-family homes in this area, Verge and, uh, Laconia. Directly adjacent to this lot, there are no homes, but across the street, there is a home. I mean, again, that's why I was trying to, with the, with the no signage, was to keep, allow them to do the used cars, but still keep kind of the residential feel of the...
Phil, let me ask this. What is it that triggers the need for the used car special permit? If I wanted to sell a car on Craigslist and I parked it in my garage, I wouldn't need a special permit?
Well, I, but I think you're, you're limited, you, you couldn't do that once a month.
I see.
I mean, I think you're allowed to, if you have a personal car that you want to sell, you're allowed to do that. You, you, once you, once you become a business and start selling a number of cars, number of times, then you, then you, then you become a used car dealer.
I see. All right. Um, Mr. President, I, I appreciate the unique nature of this, uh, special permit application. Personally, I'm not comfortable with it, given the proximity of other single-family homes and given just the current layout and design of the property. If the proposal was to totally overhaul it and make it into a used car dealership, then I think we would evaluate that on its merits, but, um, I'm just not comfortable with the proposed use in light of, uh, the current use on the premises and the single-family house to the south.
Any final questions for the petitioner? Before, Counsel Walsh.
Uh, included in the packet, there is a, um, a letter from the Indian Orchard Citizen Council, uh, recommending passage, so, uh, I think that's something we should reflect on when we're voting on this.
Before we close, close the public hearing, are there any final questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Any final comments, motions, amendments? Counsel Fenton.
I would just point out, Mr. President, that if it's the will of the body to move forward with it, um, Mr. Dromie does have a condition in here limiting, uh, his ability to put any signs up. And if this gentleman's contention is correct, that he needs to put a sign up to comply with state law, I would recommend that a counsel make a motion, uh, to rectify that.
Motion to strike the restriction of the signs.
Motion made by Counsel Rook, seconded by Counsel Edwards. All in favor of the conditions say aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it? Any final comments? Counsel Williams.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious, uh, when this was presented before the neighborhood council, the inclination was that, that we don't need no signage of this property, right? Is that correct?
Phil, did, um, we've, we've, we've closed the public hearing. Phil can answer.
Phil, can you?
I guess I, I, I couldn't, I'm not sure what the discussion was at the neighborhood council. I did, I did forward them a copy of my analysis, but I don't, I don't know whether that was a point that was discussed or not.
Thank you.
Before we vote, are there any final comments, motions, and/or amendments? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the special permit, Counsel Edwards. Yes. Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash. Yes, Counsel Twigs, absent Counsel Shea. No, Counsel Fenton.
No.
No, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams, absent Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
It passed.
More than sufficient. Special permit is approved. Counsel Edwards, on the reasons.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for by the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate this planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of the findings.
All in favor of the reasons say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Mr. Clerk.
Item number seven is a... It appears to be a recommendation for the city council to pass an order adopting regulations promulgated by the state that would reduce the speed limit in certain parts of the city of Springfield from 30 miles to 25 miles an hour.
Did you...
30 to 25.
Repeat that, please?
Give us the streets.
Well, no, no. So this is a city... This appears to be citywide. However, I just read what was submitted by the Traffic Commission. I don't believe anybody from the Traffic Commission is present today for what reason I don't know. They submitted it in a strange fashion. But what it appears to say is that certain locations around the city, particularly in heavily populated residential areas and in business locations,